Okay, we'll move on to our first agenda item for this evening under our public hearings, item C-16.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Rhodes with the Planning and Zoning Department. This is KC 1420160063, known as The Villas at Vincent Oak Rezone. It consists of three undeveloped tracts that are located on Vincent Drive, they're Zone SF3 NP. In this area, the railroad tracks parallels Vincent Drive and then Beaver off to the northwest as it approaches West St. Elmo Road. There is also a corresponding railroad crossing sign with directional areas on the north side of the site. As well, there's an on operational railroad spur that borders the northern two tracts of this property. There are single-family residences on large lots to the east that front on South Third, and then residential lots on more standard sizes also on South Third and Philco Drive. The applicant is proposing to rezone to the SF6 district and construct 19 condominiums on 1.9 acres for 12 attached units and then seven detached units. There is a site plan and a subdivision in process at this time, and that site plan shows one driveway access to Vincent Drive at the southern portion of this site. It does, there is a heritage tree at the, near the south corner, and the driveway is just north of that. This is a classic case of residential infill. Under existing SF3, the applicant could resub this property and achieve about the same number of units on this property, and to that end, there is a subdivision in process for eight duplex lots, so that would be a total of 16 duplex units on this property. So there's, there's an application for SF6 zoning with a subdivision in site plan, and then there's also, as a contingency plan, a subdivision in for eight duplex lots that could be achieved under the existing SF3 zoning. However, the applicant thinks that with this SF6 zoning, it will allow for a better outcome in terms of the existing neighbors and future residents on this property. There will be an impact of this, of development on Vincent Drive associated with any development on this property. However, the staff thinks that, given the number of residential units and vehicle trips that are proposed, is comparable to what could be achieved under the existing zoning. So the staff is recommending this rezoning case. We believe that SF3 is compatible with the adjacent and nearby single-family residences, also promoting the single-family character of the surrounding neighborhood and provides the opportunity for smart housing to occur. As, I wanted to highlight several issues associated with this case. The contact team has met with the applicant twice in November. This case has been postponed a few times since it first appeared on your agenda in August. The, the contact team at this time is supporting the valid petition, which is 54.74 percent in opposition to any rezoning of this property. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, this case is, has been filed as a smart housing case. And with that, I am available to answer any questions. There's also transportation staff in attendance tonight.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Zaragoza.
Good evening. Since one of the things that we will be weighing will be the affordability piece, the affordability period is five years, is that correct?
Let me find the letter. Yes.
Five years.
Yeah, that's, that's the letter that has been revised on May the 11th.
And do we know a ballpark figure for the fee waivers?
I don't have that at, at this time.
Okay.
As a zoning case, you know, thus far, the zoning case has been submitted, you know, with the, with the fee waivers, but then also the subdivision in site plan that are in process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McGraw, Commissioner White.
The site plan I think that we're looking at, is that the SF6 site plan? It has the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
And how, what are the differences between, do we have a site plan of the duplex scheme?
There is a proposed subdivision in, let me see if I, I know the applicant will have a copy of it, I can check my file and see, oh, let's see. Yes, I do have it, it's, no, I took, this was taken with a phone camera, so it's not of the best quality.
Okay, so that has a lot of roadway in it also, correct?
Yes, it has an access coming off of Vincent Drive, and then going to the south, and then, and then a driveway extending to the, up towards the north, and another one extending off to the northeast. And this, this is a, this is the subdivision that was submitted
Right.
to the city. I don't know that it has, you know, that the master report has been generated for it yet. So this, this configuration may or may not work for the staff.
So are these dedicated streets?
I, I think they're, I think they would have to be private.
And the one that we're looking at with the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac would be a driveway with reference to the site plan, that the site plan that's in right now with the cul-de-sac, that would have to be a, a private driveway.
Well, can you tell us the difference in the impervious cover in these two schemes? Do you have any, I mean?
I would assume that the impervious cover associated with the site plan would be fifty, at 55, close to 55 percent, and then the subdivision here would be limited to 45 percent.
So the SF6 is going to allow more impervious cover, and that's on each lot?
By, by zoning.
Or is that for the entire?
I think it's on the, on an entire basis.
So that includes all the streets, driveways that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
So the SF6 is going to make more impervious cover, okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Oh, Commissioner McGraw, I mean, White.
So, in the backup, there was reference to the impervious cover being at 47 percent instead of the 55 percent that's allowable, and a reference to just the 19 units. Were either of those considered as part of a conditional overlay?
The staff didn't, the staff didn't recommend, or we just recommended SF6 for this property. That question did come up at a, one of the, one of, at least one of the two meetings that I attended with the contact team in November, and there, the, that question was put to the applicant, but they cited concerns with being able to achieve, you know, meet all the city requirements for the lot and, or for the site as a whole, and were non-amenable to reducing the amount of impervious cover.
Okay, and then with the, with this new plan, does this show, is this taking into consideration compatibility? Does that still apply with the SF6 versus the MF2?
The plan that's on the board right now is an SF3 plan, which would not have compatibility. The SF6 plan would have the benefit of compatibility.
Right, and then one last question. In, let's see, on page 19 of 93, there's the pullout from the policies for the residential core, and the SF6 has an asterisk next to it, the uses should be conditional, and may be appropriate, appropriate when located next to more permissive districts or intensive uses depending on context. Can you tell me, it says in the front, in the staff summary, that the SF6 for this location is appropriate based on this, but I'm wondering, what are the more permissive districts and intensive uses that are in the context of this that support that?
You know, I, I would say for this property, when we looked at it as a zoning group, we, we saw this as a little different because it, it faces Vincent Avenue unlike any of the other properties on this block. It faces, it faces a railroad track, and the lots are long to which it backs up, so we, we did not make, establish this as a conditional use.
So the lot size of the SF3 around it?
And the, you know, irregular configuration of this lot and its context, context with the railroad line and the railroad spur.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments for that, first time? All right, with that, I'll invite the applicant forward. If you could introduce yourself, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Tony Giustino. I'd like to give you all some slides. Could I do that now before I continue the introduction?
Absolutely.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Chair Oliver. I'd like to, if I could, use my time to describe the project. I think there was a few things that have been updated since that, well, that are, that are incorrect in that report. Briefly, I'd like to just give an introduction with a vision of the project, how it started, the general description of the site, its relation to the, and its context with the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan. I'd like to show you a general, excuse me, the actual site plan itself, and then a summary of the community outreach that's occurred, the timeline that was alluded to, and then a summary of the benefits of the proposed development versus what could be developed with the current zoning, and then, and then finally, the agreeable conditions that, that I've agreed to, if, should this zoning be approved. Okay, so the vision, when I bought the land about a year ago, over a year ago, was to create a pocket neighborhood on currently undeveloped urban core land that fits within the framework of the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan and Austin Smart Housing Program. This is the current SF6 site plan, which is 16 units. It's not 19, as it is in that packet, it's 16, it's with the city, it's 16, it's been amended, to equate to the reasonable density that could be built today with the SF3. I'll get into that more later, I just wanted to point that out right away. Currently, it's, it's unoccupied, undeveloped, unused land. I wish the pointer worked, but I'm afraid it doesn't. Vincent Road is the, the easternmost curved red line there, and then to the west of that is the Union Pacific Railroad. The, the active railroad is the Union Pacific Railroad, it does not cross Vincent. The only thing that crosses Vincent is the abandoned Berkestrom Spur, which you'll see in another picture following. And it, if you follow it to South First, the tracks have been ripped up, South First, the city has paved South First over where, where the tracks used to be, so it is unused. So again, the active railroad does not cross Vincent. This is another shot of the, essentially, you can see it's surrounded by SF3 lots. If you follow Vincent down, SF3 lots do face Vincent. The South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan was, was completed a couple of years ago as a sort of, an addition to the Imagine Austin Plan. It's divided, the, the area of South Austin is divided into four sectors. My property lies on the northeastern sector, and within the northeastern part of that, you can see where the railroad spur offshoots there, that's where it is. The vision of the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan was to create a complete community that is mobile, interconnected, compact, accessible, affordable, natural, sustainable, healthy, safe, creative, and engaged. Within that plan, there, a character district map, a map is provided. I've zoomed in to the portion that relates to my land there in the red. You can see it's next to a transition zone in orange, which is a Jehovah Witness complex, and above that to the north is the hospital district. But in general, it is, the yellow there that you see is residential core. It is mostly SF6, SF3 today. My land is SF3, most of the surrounding land is SF3, but SF6 is also compatible with residential core. It's described as townhouse and condominium residence district intended for an area of moderate density, single-family duplex, two-family townhouse, and condominium use. In the context with the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan, sidewalks are called out often. It states repair existing sidewalks and ensure ADA compliance prioritizing, and it lists a lot of, number 17 is Vincent Drive, so that there is, you know, a plan and desire to put a sidewalk there. I was, promised the neighborhood that I would, to the portion that abuts my land, provide that sidewalk and, you know, speed up essentially the, this, this plan. For biking, currently, Vincent is a bike route approved by the city. Combined Austin Neighborhood Plan lists, well, it first states create and connect bike lanes on major thoroughfares prioritizing, and number three in that priority is Vincent Drive, because it is a main bike fair. And again, I, I told the neighbors that I would work with them to create a, a bike path to the extent that it butts my land, and I can do that. Traffic, traffic is one of the major issues here, and then you'll find the opposition, we'll talk about traffic. Their solution for traffic is to not add any development, but if that was a solution, I mean, all development south of my land would also have to be stopped, it's not likely to occur. Instead, the way to fix traffic is to do what the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan says to do. It identified a number of places that need traffic upgrades. It states improves safety for all users at the following unsigned交线 intersections, it gives a list of them, and those in, those in red there.
And actually, there's one person donating time to you this evening.
There's two, actually.
Okay, I have a card for Linda Guerrero. Okay, so you have three minutes in addition to that, and then maybe is Jerry? Yep, all right, so you will, you have up to nine total minutes, or two, ten total minutes per, per rules of procedure, okay? So you have five more minutes.
Okay, thank you. Essentially, to fix the traffic problems or to do these things and not just stop development. And again, to what I can do, to my control, I have, as I said, capped the density of the SF6 site plan to the density of a reasonable SF3 subdivision. Full disclosure, I do have, and I think it was stated, a current subdivision in process that, I can show that to you in a second as well. Finally, the, the Berkestrom Spur there could be used as a neighborhood trail, that's part of the combined neighborhood vision, I'll speak through here. Summary of the outreach, met with the Southwood Neighborhood Association last year in January, almost a year now. We agreed, met with the smart folks down at City, and we agreed to participate in that, in that program, really like it. Met with the Neighborhood Association again in March. In July, we had a public hearing at the Pleasant Hill Library. At the time, we had an MF2 application because we thought that's what was needed to do this site, this site plan. Turned out that triggered a neighborhood amendment, we decided that was overkill, so we, we dialed back to SF6. In August, I was prepared to come to you all, it was scheduled. Found out a few days before that there was a valid petition, so I, I asked for postponement to do some outreach. It was slow going, so I hired a community outreach person, Linda Guerrero, who's here if you want to ask her questions, she's available. I requested a second PC postponement. We started getting some traction, there was no contact team, that was one of the problems. Finally, the contact team was organized, still running out of time, they, they requested a postponement, we agreed. Finally, the first stakeholder meeting organized by the contact team at Mencheck Library was, was held on the first of November, a follow-up on the 15th whereby they gave some ideas for some concessions and some agreeable conditions, to which I, we took the list, and then I gave back the ones that were agreeable to me early this month in December. Benefits of the proposed plan versus the current zoning plan are compatibility requirements would kick in with the SF6, which means there's a, there'll be a buffer protecting the SF3 neighbors, so additional setbacks plus height restrictions would kick in. Density doesn't change, again, I want to keep emphasizing this, that's under allowed zoning. A neighborhood, excuse me, the neighborhood will be built to smart housing requirements such as green, ADA compliant, affordable, et cetera. City would obviously gain a couple of smart housing units. It's a better layout, the community feels it's a pocket neighborhood versus, and it's cohesive, there'll be an HOA, a way to interact with, with the community versus a row of individual homes, which will probably be investment duplexes. Nothing against that, I'm just, I'm just pointing that out, that, that I want to build a pocket neighborhood. Finally, drainage, flood mitigation will be improved through a professionally engineered site, and I did agree to some conditions. If I have some time, I want to point out drainage was also, and flooding was also an issue that the neighbors are concerned about, understandably so. I have a letter from the engineer explaining that there's no difference between going from SF3 to SF6 in terms of increasing danger for flooding. It's in the back if you wish to see it. This is the SF3 subdivision someone asked about, this is the most, the current, but again, it's, we're asking for subdivision first, you have to subdivide it, and then any site plan would come afterwards. We're doing it all at once, just, I can explain that later if you wish, I don't want to take up too much time, but it's the parallel plan. I have additional slides to explain more on the, the density that you were asking about. So both SF3 and SF6, maximum building coverage is at 40 percent, so that doesn't change. The only difference is total impervious cover for an SF3 is 45, and for SF6 is 55. Our current plan, it's with the city, has a total of 47. The neighbors did ask if I could cap it at that. I can't agree to that because I don't, it's not done going, coming back and forth from the city. Should the city ask for more wider ADA ramps or more parking, because with, with the, the site plan for the SF6, unlike this subdivision, I have to provide additional parking, communal space, should they want more in retainage, those type of things, you know, wider alleys, I would have to give, I would have to take the impervious cover then, if I cap it at 47, from the building coverage. So then I would actually be limiting myself to less building covers than I have today. So, so, but I, but if the city could tell me today that it would pass, it would stay at 47. Hope that answers everyone's question, I'm sorry, I don't know how much time I have left because I didn't time myself. But these are the list of agreeable conditions, we can go through them, you have them there. This is a letter from the engineer explaining about the drainage mitigation, and he's here for your questioning as well. Anyway, I'll, I'll stop there and.
Perfect timing, there you go.
Yeah.
All right, questions for the applicant? All right, Commissioner Zaragoza.
So if we could go back to this site plan picture, please?
I had it in the middle, and I stuck it at the beginning because I thought that'd probably be the most interesting.
So, yes, this one is different from the one that we have in our backup, in that you do have the detached units fronting the street. My question is, it, it seems like you want the flexibility with the impervious cover until you get the okay on your site plan, but the number of units, you've mentioned a couple of times that it's the same that you could get with SF3, so does that mean you're amenable to the cap at 16?
Yes, in fact, when, if you look at the conditions I have agreed to, is either a cap at 16 with 12 structures, which is this, or if I were to want more than 12 structures, to cap the units at 15, so I would even reduce units, if, say I wanted more detached versus, there's a, there's four duplex and the rest are, are, are the single-family detached. So if that mix were to change and I, I would want more detached, I would even limit from 16 to 15, that's one of the conditions I've agreed to.
Okay, then my, my next question, so I think if we can, if we can see, you know, the impervious cover is something that we'll have to, you know, talk about later, but the number of units seems about the same as what you could get now, but my concern is the size of these structures that you have adjacent to Lot 4321 on the upper side, and how those might feel to the, to those homes. Can you tell me what the square footage is of, say, the top one, that unit seven and eight, I think?
So.
Like your largest building?
Yeah, and it's funny, I was gonna.
What is the FAR of your largest building?
I, I want to say it's, it's around 1,700 to 1,800 square feet, but I don't have my architect here, and it's, I have, I have the full SF3 prelim plan in, in digital form that we can look that up, I'm sure. I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, and I, the architect was going to come in, and I told him he didn't have to because there was nothing to talk about, and I was wrong, sorry.
Well, well, maybe we can dig into that.
I will say that the other, so one of the negatives with the SF3 is that they, because it'll be subdivided, they may be sold off separately. I can't control what someone else builds if that happens. The SF6 has that 25-foot buffer. With SF3, you have no buffer, so someone could build an equally similar structure but 10 feet away, because it's SF3 against SF3, and you're allowed to 10 feet on back lots, 5 feet on side lots, whereas here, anywhere there's SF3, if I get SF6, it'll have to be 25 feet. It's an increased protection, I think, for the neighbors, should SF6 go forth. Otherwise, I mean, I honestly, I don't have the entire SF3 plan figured out if I'm going to develop all of it, or if some of it may have to be, I don't know.
Would you, once we drill more into what your largest building might look like, would you consider a cap on the FAR of any one structure?
I would consider it, I don't know what that would be tonight, because I just don't have any numbers to, to consider in my head, you know?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
And if I could add, that one of the conditions I'm agreeable to is working with the Southwood Neighborhood Association, so when the HOAs put together, you know, I, I plan on having them be part of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner White.
So, in our backup, it says, the applicant thinks that the requested SF6 zoning will allow for a better community outcome, and I think you've mentioned a couple of things that you think will lead to that, but can you talk to that point a little bit more of
Sure.
why SF6 will be better for the community?
Sure, so, so one of the obvious features in this site plan is the large tree, it's 55-inch, it's, it's named after, the development's named after the oak, called it Vincent Oak. If, if it was to be subdivided, that would own to one person, whereas here, the way we have it laid out, if, that area is a communal area. This, this is a pocket neighborhood, it's essentially, you know, a very small neighborhood of not too many units, that, that shares living space, they're close together, and there's, you know, there's community space, and that's what we intend to do here. Otherwise, some of the, they would just be individual lots. I agreed not to make it a closed gated, the neighbors didn't want that, so that's, it's going to be open. Did that answer your question?
Commissioner Seager.
Yes, I was looking at the original site plans, and I really wasn't happy that the driveway was over the critical root zone of that tremendous tree. I'm glad to see in this plan you've moved it over. But I just wanted to clarify something, that if you had an SF3 development, we would have probably the same-sized buildings as that we would have in the proposed FF6, because we, we have the same site development standards in reality, except for a bit more impervious cover. So I'm not quite sure where the FF, SF6 is detrimental to those four lots that they face. Could you give me an idea without going into your site plan too much, exactly what the massing is that you're looking at? I'm not going to ask you about far, I'm just asking about massing.
So is the question, why is SF6 detrimental?
Yes, in your mind, is the building for SF3 and the building for SF6 the same? Are you looking at the same-sized building?
It's very similar. I think that the ones that abut, the lots 1 through 4, I mean, I could scroll to the other, I think it's fairly the same ratio, you could see that they're not that, that far off. SF6 allows you obviously to have smaller units and detached, so that's one of the advantages of it. When they're duplex style, the structure itself is large, but the unit may not be that large.
Is smaller, yeah. Okay, and I'm assuming those are detention ponds at the end of the lots, is that correct? I know that this is a site plan question and we're zoning, but
I think it's.
I got sucked in, sorry.
Yeah, they're, I think it's water.
The rain gardens.
Rain gardens.
The rain gardens, okay. The rain gardens, okay. And then you've agreed to build fencing, is that correct? I think that's a requirement also.
That's a requirement I agreed to, yes.
Are you going to do any type of vegetative buffer also, or is it...
I agree that I wouldn't, that I would make everything native that was asked for, and I would not put sprinklers.
And turf grass, et cetera.
Exactly, I've agreed to all that, it's in the conditions. There will be a landscaper, I wish I could be at that point planning that, but until I know that it's even, you know, it will be, it will be done right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner's ergo.
I'm sorry, I know you already told me no, but I'm going to try this again. I would feel a lot better thinking about this project if I knew the massing would be similar to what you might be able to get with a duplex in SF3, which looks like for the size lots, about 3,700 square feet. So I don't know if, while we hear from neighbors, if maybe you could call your architect and see what the square footage is of your largest...
The square footage is actually written on that.
I know there's something on ours, but it's so small, there's no way I could read it from my plan.
Yeah.
And not now, but it sounds like we're going to take testimony, so if there's a way you can look into that between now and...
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Commissioner White.
I don't know if this helps, but the maximum height for the two different zonings is the same, so in terms of massing, it's not going to be that much bigger. If the building, if the, if the maximum building coverage is the same and the maximum building height is the same, those two are going to restrict it to a similar type of massing.
I guess if you clustered, say, four units together along the back, if that's how it ended up going to work, then the neighbor who's right there sees this mass of structure. But it looks like that's not what, what you're planning, that you're planning on breaking them up into smaller buildings, and it's just confirming that, that one building couldn't absorb all those units if it came to that.
Okay. All right, we will call, unless there's further questions for the applicant, we'll call forward our first person.
Thank you very much.
Signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Do we have, let's see, we should have a lead speaker, Christopher Scholar? I have numbers on the cards and you got number one, so if you don't, if you want to pass the baton, that's, go for it. The first speaker does get five minutes, so if you wanted to speak first but then pass the five minutes to somebody else, that's okay.
I can do that.
All right, so you'll have one minute?
I won't need that.
All right, okay, introduce yourself, please.
Okay, my name is Missy Bledsoe, and I'm the chairman of the South Manchek Contact Team. And joining me this evening are all my neighbors here that are affected by this particular development. Want to raise your hand? That's all of them there. And as Wendy said, we have had several meetings with Tony, and so I won't go into that. But I did want to mention that you probably have noticed that you don't have a position paper from the contact team and for or against any of this, and that is because we are supporting the valid petition, because it does have such a huge percentage of people who have signed it. And so as far as, and as far as negotiating any conditions, we have...
A minute goes fast.
That does go fast.
If you need to do an introduction of something else, that's okay, but we need to wrap up.
Okay, no, I'll stop there.
Okay. Then our next speaker, Christopher Scholar, and you'll have five minutes. Actually, you have time being donated to you, so you, let's see, you need seven minutes?
Okay.
Is Stephanie here? And David King, I see, all right, so you have seven minutes if you need it?
Okay. Good evening, my name is Christopher Scholar, and I, like many of my neighbors, oppose the spot rezoning proposal for the Vincent Villas. If I could just finish up what Missy was saying, we have never agreed to any conditions for an SF6, just so you know. So any, any conditional agreements have not been from the Neighborhood Association. So again, my many neighbors, and when I say many, I refer to a valid position, petition we've submitted, whose signers represent far more than the 20% required. We have more than 50%. And this is in addition to the unanimous vote by our South Manchak Contact Team. There are several reasons that we oppose this petition. One reason is safety. The area in discussion is already one that is unsafe. While it may not be the responsibility of the developer to improve Austin's infrastructure, I believe it is incumbent upon our officials, you good people, to vote in a way that does not exacerbate an already treacherous situation. Another reason, I'm sorry. Another reason is that this proposal does not adhere to our neighborhood, the SACNP's own codes, which was called out in the staff report. Vincent Road's character is almost rural, in that it is a corridor that abuts a railroad track. It's on the edge of this. Nor does it comply with Imagine Austin's tenants. While those specifically refer to developments offering realistic opportunities for transit, bicycle, and pedestrian travel, and for infill to maximize those same opportunities, it's not, it's not a safe area. Finally, this proposed development does not qualify under the SMART guidelines. In conclusion, the SACNP is the first neighborhood adopted under the Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan. We ask that you support us in our attempts to work within and continue to support these plans, and vote against this development which runs counter to them. This spot rezoning request is not safe and it's not SMART. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
I'd now like to introduce Ray Collins.
Before Ray comes up?
Oh, okay.
We sometimes do it one at a time, sometimes we do it at the end, but it's...
I've never done this before. Okay, hi, I'm here for questions.
So my question to you, have you seen the plan that could be built today with, or what's your preference for developing eight units through duplexes, I mean, 16 units through duplexes, then 16 units through this plan? If you could explain that?
Yeah, oh, I can explain. We, the Neighborhood Association, has never seen a realistic two-scale SF3 plan. We found out after it had been submitted that there was the SF6 plan, and then what we got was something that was just a sketch. We were told then that it hadn't gone any further because that that wasn't the proposal, and in my opinion, it was ginned up to scare us, because it looked worse, but again, had nothing, nothing to scale, it was just a sketch. And it seems like we're jumping through an awful lot of hoops if, as the petitioner states, they're pretty much the same thing. I don't understand why then we're pushing for an increase in density to SF6.
Thank you.
Commissioner White.
Could you pull the slide with why it's not SMART up one more time?
Sure. Here you go. We've seen in the images, that area is already, actually, if I can take you back to here. Okay, this is the area pretty much where the development would enter Vincent Road. I don't know if you've driven Vincent Road, but it's very narrow, hilly, and has poor drainage, and it's only one lane in either direction. It's zoned for 25 miles per hour. This is at a point where the bike lane disappears, and the instruction is to share the road between cars and bicycles. Even though this is a bicycle corridor, there is no bike lane in this area. So it's a pretty treacherous drive, I drive it every day, because my son goes to school at the end of Vincent. And the, some of the SMARTs tenants are that it should be, you know, convenient to transit and bikable. That barely exists currently on Vincent Road, and would only get worse under any development dumping out onto it. The northbound Vincent Road, especially in the morning, has traffic going to St. David's Hospital as well as St. Elmo's School, and there is nothing more than a stop sign at the end of it as it hits St. Elmo, and traffic can get backed up, I've seen it as many as 17, 18 cars in the morning, and that's a regular thing in a school zone and a hospital zone.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker, Mr. Collins.
I'm going to, yeah, this...
And it looks like you've got donated time as well.
This is for Mr. Collins.
Okay. Mr. Collins, you'll have the standard three minutes, and then several people are donating time, you just want to make sure I get this right. I've got Tara Connolly here, and Kate Mason Murphy. Okay, so that is five minutes, okay?
Yeah, I thought I had six minutes.
Yeah, there's, it looks like one other person who's wishing to donate time, Margaret Dunn. All right, so you have six minutes?
Yeah, great, that six minutes should be plenty. My name is Ray Collins, I'm a contact team member. The first training I was offered was a forum with some familiar panelists, Richard Suttles of Armbriston Brown for Developers, Laura Morrison for Neighborhoods, James Northee. Before the forum, I'd read of spot zoning, but something Richard Suttles said about it is pertinent this evening and gave meaning to that information. He spoke about how he has to deal with the fact that when he is asking for upzoning such as that before the Planning Commission tonight in a solidly SF3 neighborhood, this absolutely puts, quote, I'm quoting him here, "This absolutely puts the rest of the block in jeopardy." And neighborhood people know there are going to be 10 others, his words, 10 other developers behind him with similar or higher upzoning requests. From the residents' point of view, this results in the destruction of their neighborhood. Calling your attention to page 93 of the staff report, the third paragraph of the letter the contact team sent you addresses this and asks you to join us in upholding the valid petition and not allowing this zoning change for this reason alone. I'm also here to make known to you that there are residents, myself included, who are working on having the city buy this property. Mr. Giostino is on record at the November 1st meeting of the contact team that he is willing to sell it to the city. Our goal is to have the city hold the property until Austin's long-term plans for the unused railroad Roxburgh right-of-way come to fruition. These plans include an urban trail, bike lanes, sidewalks, and improvements to this section of Vincent Drive from a 70-era, 70s-era Texas farm-to-market road or rural ranch road to an urban street that is reasonably safe for all users. In the course of some discussion with watershed protection about having the city buy the property for stormwater retention, city engineer John Middleton told me that they used a half-inch of rainfall as a rough initial estimate of how much water undeveloped property would retain before water starts moving downhill. For this 1.9 acre property with the 47% impermeable cover of the SF6 site plan currently under review by Mrs. Rhodes, 37,920 gallons of stormwater starts moving the two blocks downhill to the Williamson Creek floodplain for every inch of rainfall. One of my former coworkers lost her home in Southwood to Williamson Creek flooding after upzoning and development of a property uphill from her. She is one of many who are already gone, and there are more homes at risk. I will last address the staff's recommendation as it relates to the Vision Zero timeline. May 19th, the city council resolved the city is going to pursue the Vision Zero goal that reducing pedestrian bicycle and traffic fatalities should be the first purpose of any city road network. July 16th, city manager Ott produced a memo directing Rob Spiller and Greg Gurnsey, among others, to implement it. So here we are, five months later. I found out just last week that pedestrian safety was chosen as a priority, and Joel Meyer was hired as pedestrian coordinator for ATD. A draft pedestrian safety action plan is scheduled for summer 2017. Obviously, this timeline doesn't fit what we are here to discuss tonight. I have a faint hope that if we were having this discussion in December 2017, there might be a different staff recommendation, a recommendation against development of this Vincent Drive property. Since I retired a few years ago, I drive this unsafe section of Vincent Drive two or three times monthly when traffic is off-peak. Even so, I routinely collect a following of a few cars simply by going the speed limit. The traffic is fast and excessive. I am your witness that the Vision Zero Austin goal of reducing fatalities via road design is nowhere in sight in tonight's staff report or on Vincent Drive. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Collins?
Sir, I have a question for you. So if 16 units could, or if 16 units can be built here under either SF3 or SF6, and there's a...
I'm sorry, my poor hearing is aggravated by being stopped up.
Yeah, it's definitely in the weather right now. If 16 units could be built on this property under SF3 or SF6, the same number of cars would be leaving from this single, single connecting point to Vincent Road, under current zoning or new zoning? So safety is not going to be impacted by the zoning, as I see it, because the road conditions will, would remain what they are, with the exception of possibly a new sidewalk being built along Vincent Road as part of the development. So how can, how can SF6 be viewed as hurting the safety more than SF3?
Well, I'll refer you to my previous statement about, we're actually working to have this property left undeveloped.
Right, but if, but if they choose, if the current landowner chooses to develop this as-is, I mean, they, that's not a choice for us to be considering, whether or not someone wants to buy it from the developer.
I understand. And at that point, I, you know, I certainly can see that there's going to be approximately the number, same number of cars. I would dispute one thing with you, though, about the SF3, and that is that when Mrs. Rhodes actually gets to her finish point with an SF3 site plan, I think you're going to find that not only can he build seven or eight units, he might be unable to build even fewer because of the, when he makes it into a subdivision, my big question is whether Mrs. Rhodes will approve the access of emergency vehicles when he makes that subdivision street. So I think there will be fewer with SF3, although that's not my goal overall.
Understood, okay. All right, other questions for Mr. Collins? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker, let's see, we've got Larry Murphy. And you would be our last three-minute speaker.
Good evening, my name is Larry Murphy, I'm a contact team member.
Good evening, my name is Larry Murphy, I'm a contact team member, and I'm also a parent. Uh, we have four children that live in the neighborhood. And currently, we have two elementary schools that, um, are our safe routes to school that would flow north through our neighborhood zone would be St. Elmo Elementary, where we had a pedestrian hit this, this school year on St. Elmo. But it's also our safe route continuing on, um, to Mount Vernon and then Red to Jocelyn Elementary, the other elementary school that serves our neighborhood. Currently, we have very few sidewalks and they're not connected. And also, let me say this, I'm a lifelong cyclist and right now I'm missing the Bicycle Advisory Council meeting to attend this one. And so part of the reason I live here is because of the connectivity. The bike Route 31, the connectivity to our local elementary schools, our grocery stores, it's a livable zone. It's one of the last zones of affordability in Austin. It's become unsafe. This entire area needs transformation in terms of transportation. It's the exit, I mean, from the exit from Ben White, our hospital zone, Vincent Road, our bike Route 31. And currently, the traffic is so bad and it comes up, it pours through our neighbors' streets on South Third, South Second. And, um, it's just not tenable. There are not safe routes to school for our children as-is. So part of my question, and now I'm going to stop where I thought, you know, I thought I wanted to speak because one of the distinctions that I would understand between SF3 and SF6 would have to do with the number of drive easements.
The number of drive easements?
The driveway easements. In other words, under SF3, there would be much more likely to be individual drives on a very unsafe road on that curve and that railroad track. And my question is whether SF3 would be likely to be approved, given the current unsafe conditions? In other words, if we have individual driveways exiting out onto Vincent, what does that look like in terms of actually approving that? And the, the second concern that I want to raise is traffic routing during construction. So we're going to route construction traffic through St. Elmo School Zone, close Vincent? Are we routing all that existing car traffic through our neighborhood on South Third where we have members right in the, in the audience where they live? There aren't sidewalks on those streets either. There is no way for my children to get to school safely and we're going to pump all that additional car traffic through. So SF3 versus SF6, one of my safety concerns would be the driveways. And if it were SF3, it might be less likely to be approved, given those conditions. I don't know.
Well, I, I can't speak to whether, what the conditions would be of the subdivision itself. We can only respond to what we have seen and planned this evening.
This is an overwhelmed, Vincent Drive is an overwhelmed, what's called a neighborhood connector or neighborhood collector street. And other communities like San Antonio have no new residential zoning, no new addresses on neighborhood collector or neighborhood connector streets because those are the traffic zones and they're using that right-of-way to increase for all users. And so San Antonio is ahead of Austin in that regards. I mean, now we're going to actively be letting and allowing development out of character with our plan right on our connector, collector street.
Questions for Mr. Murphy? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have, um, one other person signed up to speak against, Mary Olmstead. And Ms. Olmstead, you'll have one minute?
I'm Mary Olmstead and I'm a 33-year resident of the neighborhood. I live about a half-mile away. And I'm against the development in any form, whether it's SF3 or 6, simply because of the traffic issue. It is so unsafe right now. I'm an intrepid walker. I walk that neighborhood daily. But I am afraid to walk that stretch of Vincent. It's taking your life into your own hands if you're on foot, on a bicycle, and even, it's very much a challenge to drive a car on it. If you're coming from the north and you go over that railroad spur, it's sort of reverse engineered. So, um, you fly up over it, it's a blind curve. And when I'm coming from the other direction, I've had cars almost hit me. They cross that center line. Excuse me, my allergies. Also, because it's near the hospital zone, you just jog over very quickly and that's a very narrow road. So we're just adding to that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, okay, that concludes those signed up to speak in, in opposition to this. I'll invite the applicant forward again for a three-minute rebuttal.
Close, uh, before I give my closing remarks, I just want to do a quick rebuttal on, you know, I did pass the SMART criteria and I'm adding more. The SF3 wasn't initially shown to the neighborhood because that wasn't the plan. When, uh, I was trying to make a point, I sent an email to someone that then, in good faith, shared it with others. It got out of hand and anyway, the SF3 now is, is an engineered plan. And, and finally, as, as the domino effect, there's no two-acre lots that are empty around there. And then finally, there was a question on fee waivers, it was 10%. In closing, I just want to say I do sympathize with everything that's been said when it comes to the, the traffic concerns. I, I will do what I can, I've, I've said this over and over, to, to try to push for those improvements that have been identified in the South Austin combined neighborhood plan. I, I can only do that. And other than, like I said, I've, I've frozen the density to what is reasonable today. You could probably squeeze more, but a reasonable development of quarter-acre lots, uh, like the neighbors' is, I think, reasonable. And in, in closing, I just want to say that I, I, my intention is to build a good neighborhood. I think that adding some density there may, may actually slow traffic because there's something there, not just empty field. But I do sympathize with the sentiments and I'm, I'm not going to negate that there's, there's fast traffic there, a lot of it.
Further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, um, is there a motion to close public hearing? Commissioner Seager, seconded by Commissioner White. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, public hearing is now closed. Before taking questions, I have, or for discussion or possible motion, I do find that, uh, having yet another case that is significantly impacted with the zoning is so influenced by people's viewpoint on infrastructure. It's such a common theme within our city, not just for your neighborhood, but for all neighborhoods. It's just a very stressful conversation because sometimes even more, whether or not in this case someone is doing the right thing, it feels like anything is just more than what a place can handle. And I find myself certainly remiss tonight not to have, um, our Public Works Director with us to, we frequently had a director involved with us and his comments are sorely missed and I, I hope we can get that back again. Because when it comes, when it comes to the point in the conversation where we're talking about schedules of when something might get done to, to help allay some fears, I, I've, I've found comments from the Public Works Department very helpful. So just a point of note on that. Anyone want to join the fray on this, or Commissioner White?
I have a couple of questions for staff. So the first question is, I guess, procedural. With the valid petition, I know that it said it, that it was a petition against any upzoning whatsoever, but did it need to be, or was it revisited once the zoning was changed from MF2 to SF6?
Uh, actually, the petition was only submitted after it was amended to SF6.
Okay.
It came in as an MF2 and it was amended, um, I want to say maybe July of this year. And then the petition was submitted in, yeah, end of July or, or early August. So, yeah, the petition was always for SF6.
And then the second question I have is, my understanding is that with SF3, you have the opportunity to pay a fee in lieu for sidewalks if you're going to be building new structures on your SF3 lot. With the SF6, I know the applicant has said that he's willing to do the sidewalks and, and add that to the frontage of his property on Vincent. Is there, does he have the opportunity to do a fee in lieu or to do some sort of waiver to, to not have to do the sidewalks there with SF6?
I'm going to defer to transportation staff on that.
Or with smart housing, I don't know if either of those law come in?
Anna Martin, Transportation. I can say that in very, very few cases are we taking fee in lieu in place of sidewalks now. And that would not be something we would look at here on Vincent Drive unless it was a constructibility issue.
Specifically, um, related to SF6 and smart housing or to all development?
To all development.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Shisler?
Yeah. All right, up here, um, do you know the roadway classification for Vincent?
Vincent Drive is a residential collector.
Thank you. So, so under the site plan, it would be obligated to make any improvements to bring it up to current standards, but only within their frontage?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is there, are there forthcoming plans, or is there anything in the schedule related to Vincent that we should be aware of?
Vincent Drive, as everyone's pointed out tonight, has significant challenges. We have about 21 feet of pavement there, no bike lanes and no sidewalks. Uh, the first thing we have to undertake, and we're committed to doing this regardless of the outcome of the zoning case, is get a survey done. And ATD, in partnership with Public Works, is going to kick that off hopefully 2017. The right-of-way is complicated because it abuts the railroad. So we need to see where the city property line ends, where UP begins, and from there do a preliminary engineering report to see the opportunities for Vincent Drive. And like I said, we're going to be undertaking this regardless of the outcome of this case.
Commissioner Zergessen?
I'm not sure who this question would be for. If this site gets subdivided into SF3 lots, then there wouldn't be any flood control requirements. Is that correct?
That is not correct? Or how, how does?
The subdivision.
The subdivision plans would have to do with four lots.
The drainage is, is studied at the time of subdivision.
So at the subdivision, it would be required, okay.
Whether they have an SF6 subdivision or whether they have a duplex subdivision, the, the drainage will be, will be, is, is being studied at this time since they do have two applications in.
I see, okay, thank you.
Commissioner McGraw?
So the duplex scheme that we saw had a private driveway in the middle of it. So does that, is, is that really a condominium scheme? I'm not.
Actually, I, I may be wrong on that and I, I would welcome the applicant to correct me. Just for the record, I'm, I'm a zoning case manager. I don't, I'm not a subdivision or site plan case manager. When I looked at it, it, it looked like a driveway. However, it may be, have been intended as a, uh, public streets, all of those. And I'm not sure, but hopefully the applicant's. Okay, what the applicant is saying is that the, uh, end of the duplex subdivision, that that is a driveway easement. You know, whether that's, meets city code requirements, I, I don't know. But that's being looked at with the subdivision.
It's a driveway easement, so those duplexes are on individual lots?
Yes.
They are on individual lots?
Yeah, they have to be.
Is there, this, the way this, this property is kind of oddly shaped, but it's surrounded by single-family lots. And so I know that a big issue is this tree, carrying for this big tree. But is there any reason that the lot lines behind this, say that face South Third, couldn't be carried through to where each lot faced onto Vincent? I mean, is there any reason that would?
We need to defer to the applicant.
Okay.
I don't have a good idea of subdivision design.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, if that inner driveway is a requirement to develop the property or if the lots could all just face, just exit into Vincent.
And in that case, you would have multiple driveway, multiple new driveways on this described dangerous road?
Oh, I understand that, I understand that. I'm just thinking of that in terms of, um, kind of the impervious cover of more roads and, and, uh, just, just curious because, um, I guess I'm trying to understand where the neighborhood's coming from. I understand that they, they really see a lot of problems with any development, but yet the owner's entitled to some development. So, um, it, it's very difficult for me to try to weigh, you know, which one is better. I think that's what we're, we're trying to do because we're faced with some development. We're not faced with either, you know, development or not, we're faced with which kind. And so that's, I know, I'm still not clear.
Commissioner Seager?
This is one of those cases where it's kind of gut-wrenching, where you really empathize with the neighborhood. You see the narrow streets, you hear people say my children cannot get to school safely. So we're kind of charged with, well, what do we feel is the better use for this property? And right now, this can be an SF3 community with individual driveways going on to Vincent Drive with no compatibility on the rear lots facing the existing SF3 lots. When I came in, I recog, here this evening, I recognized that this has a 55, roughly 55% valid petition rate and that is extremely high. However, in hearing what could happen if, um, this was developed as an SF3 as opposed to an SF6, my thinking is really changing because I think we need to protect the ingress egress off, on, of Vincent. I don't think the neighborhood wants all those SF3 driveways going out there and protecting the existing lots on the east side of the property. So at least there can be compatibility standards enacted. So, um, again, challenged as to what is the best thing for all property owners in this situation? Those are my comments and my thoughts for this evening.
Yes, that, that issue came up, a, a, as I mentioned earlier. I, I did attend two meetings with the contact team in, in November and that, that issue specifically came up at both of those meetings. The differences between SF3 and SF6.
Commissioner Bell?
I completely agree with Commissioner Seager and the additional curb cuts are very dangerous for bicyclists as well. It's much better if all the traffic is flowing out of one, you know, clearly kind of identifiable and observable curb-cut driveway than if there's, you know, a handful of them, a half dozen of them, where cars are entering and exiting and, you know, you as a pedestrian or as a bicyclist have to really keep more of an eye out. I also think, just looking at, again, I know that the, the, that scheme is not, the design that we saw isn't final, but I'd really rather have the traffic backing up within the property, assuming like, you know, rush hour kind of, uh, uh, timing than to have, uh, you know, six different driveways, you know, with, with all those cars kind of pouring out from different driveways. I, I think that just in the grand scheme of things, it's probably, again, given the options that are on the table before us, my, I'm leaning toward the, uh, the SF6 design with the one entry and exit.
Other commissioners, Commissioner McGraw?
I think this is, this is very difficult and I recognize that the neighborhood plan was just completed in 2014. And so I can understand that all of you went through a lot of hard work. And this remains zoned SF3 because everything around it is SF3. And it makes a lot of sense to you for this to be SF3. But what we're dealing with is a city where every little nick and spot is going to get built on. I mean, that's the reality we're facing. So we have these oddly shaped parcels that come up and somebody's going to try to develop them. So I think, I think in that sense, the SF6 may be a pretty good tool. I think the heartburn is, if we put that on the map, surrounded by SF3, then other people want to come get their SF6 that could result in greater density. So this is really difficult and I appreciate the, the difficulty of not wanting to see that SF6 two years after you adopted your neighborhood plan. I'm not sure that, um, leaving it SF3 works very well. I do think there are some better things in the. I do think there are some better things in the SF6, like the engineered site plan, maybe for drainage. Um, and if the density is the same, I think the one piece I'm unclear on is how much square footage is in this project? How much building square footage is in the project? I feel like that's a mystery right now and how big the buildings are. Cause we're in zoning. We're not even at the site plan. So we don't, we don't really have that sense. Um, and I think if there's any way that the neighborhood would continue to talk to the developer and try to hone in on those very specific things, I'd love to see that happen. But, um, anyway, those are just some thoughts.
Commissioner Kazee and then Zergessen.
You know, like the other commissioners, I'm kind of torn on this as well. Um, although, you know, after reviewing the SF3 subdivision, you know, a joint access easement is fairly common. If there's more than four lots, the joint access drive has to meet certain standards that mimic, uh, public street standards. And that seems like that was done here. And so if there can be 16 units, I agree with some of the comments that has been made before about, um, having SF6 rather than SF3 with less chance of multiple drives. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve SF6, uh, with the conditional overlay limiting density to 16 units and limiting impervious cover to 50%. So there is some buffer to, as, as you go through the site plan, but not up to 55.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Schisler. Hold on just a second. So you had 50% and 16 units is your two conditions on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So motion to approve SF6 zoning. I'll get you.
I wanna make a friendly amendment before you read through it.
Oh, okay. And, um, continue. Sure.
Sorry about that.
Um, I'm wondering if you consider, uh, and it, it seems to fit with the current site plan that not more than, that a building may not have more than two units. I think what I'm trying to avoid is if something changes, having maybe four units attached in one specific spot.
Yeah, I can accept that. Is that an allowable, um, are we allowed to do that with our conditions?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, so friendly amendment, is it, uh, supported by our motion maker in our second? Okay. So no more than two units may be attached. Commissioner Seeger.
Can I make another friendly amendment to have one ingress egress into this development?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Second. All right. Commissioner White.
I just have a quick question on the presentation that the applicant presented. There were a number of agreeable conditions that I'm wondering which ones of these could be added to that conditional overlay since they've already been vetted by the applicant.
Page nine of his handout?
The applicant's proposed conditions, uh, 16 units, we have that. Building may not, okay, freestanding. Uh, development will not contain accessory dwelling units. I think that can be a CO because that is a land use.
Okay.
We're restricting the access to Vincent Road. Native landscaping and no turf grass. Uh, I, I don't think that's doable in a, uh, conditional overlay or restrictive covenant. Closed gated community, the city, um, does not encourage those, but I, I don't think we can do that as, as a condition of zoning. Development will use solid, city solid waste. I don't, that's not a condition of zoning. Erosion control will be implemented on the fence line between SF3 and SF6. Places where topography dropped, that's, I don't, that's not a condition of zoning. Developer will build a fence between SF6 and SF3. That could be a, a, uh, condition. However, I would need a, a height. It could be up to eight feet or it could be six feet and, um, I'm assuming it's a solid fence. And then compatibility standards will be honored. Uh, that's not something, that's, that isn't something that we can do by way of a zoning ordinance and developer will work in good faith to, to develop initial HOA bylaws with Southwood and Neighborhood Association. That's not something. So we, we could add the fencing and the ADUs.
Commissioner Seeger, do you, uh, or was this from Commissioner Seeger or White?
It's me.
It was you. Commissioner White, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a friendly amendment to add those two conditions that the developer offered. The development will not contain accessory dwelling units and the developer will build a fence between SF6 and SF3 at a solid eight-foot fence? Does the eight-foot have to be agreed upon by both residents on either side?
Uh, no.
Just if it's taller than eight?
It can be, you can establish a requirement for an eight-foot fence along the, uh, property line.
Devel, um, can the applicant tell us if they have a preference on six versus eight?
You have to come up to the microphone, please. Thanks.
Applicant. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Tony, is it?
Yes.
Sorry. With the number eight on your agreeable conditions, developer will build a fence between SF6 and SF3. Are you comfortable with an eight-foot fence?
I mean, are you comfortable with that fence? I just think that's not very aesthetic. Trying to build a nice neighborhood. Quaint, I don't know. It just seems high to me. I mean, I, I do it, but...
Six foot is what you had in mind?
Something more normal of a neighborhood.
Okay. Six foot.
Six-foot solid fence? Okay. Is that agreeable to our motion maker in our second? All right.
Um, well, not quite.
The, the accessory dwelling units, I don't know how you can do them on a site plan, so I don't think that's relevant, but I'll accept just to be redundant.
It was something they requested, so I put in there. I, I don't know how we'd do those either.
Yeah.
No, if you do it.
Okay.
All right. It'll be in the language.
Six units, 16 units is 16 units.
That's right. Okay. Commissioner McGrath.
Um, I, I guess I'm trying to really get around the idea of the FAR because on single-family, we would have that limitation. And, and I would like to see this mimic the SF3 rigs as much as possible. But I'm not sure how, I'm not sure SF6 has any, there has to be a FAR associated with it. I don't, does anybody know?
There is no.
No FAR?
Not on the table.
Not until, not until you get into MF3 is there even a, uh, FAR required on any single-family. There's no FAR, but you're limited by your building coverage mainly.
And your height and compatibility.
Your height and compatibility.
I just wouldn't want to let this go and find out they could build twice the bulk that, you know, that we would have in SF3. And I'm not sure how to state that. Yes.
So the, both SF3 and SF6 have the same building coverage maximum, which is 40%. Nothing changes there. The only thing that changes is the total. So I have to put in extra driveway, uh, uh, parking spaces, for example, things like drainage, the sidewalk that I was offering. I don't know if I could put that in now with 50% limit, but that, those are the things that would go to the 55, not a building. Buildings are capped at 40 for both.
And the building thickness is the same?
Yeah.
The height. What about, uh, build stories? I mean, I think it could be limited to two stories.
You could, you could limit this to two stories.
The compatibility around, uh, the SF3 is limited to two-story. The ones facing Vincent can go to three.
Yep.
I think to, to reflect the character of the neighborhood, that we should limit it to two stories.
It's a friendly amendment request?
Um, I mean, I'd like to hear from the applicant if you're opposed to it or...
If, if I had to do that, I probably would continue, I mean, I, I don't know the answer, but I probably would continue with the SF3 subdivision for the time being and, and, and I'd have to decide at that point which is, cause I still have to go to, um, it, it's a valid petition. I still have to get the super majority at City Council, which is in late January. So...
I'm okay with more than two stories along Vincent, so I'm gonna reject the friendly amendment.
Yeah. And, and sir, I, yeah. No more time at the microphone.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I just wanted to tell the audience that we, the public hearing's closed. So just to let...
I just didn't know why my, I signed up to talk and he skipped me. I had a lot to say.
Ma'am, um... I, my apologies. If I could ask you to come to my front real quick? Um, the, the public hearing is closed. There was a moment, um, and this was obviously a miscommunication between you and I, when I was asking for, um, people, well, it wasn't necess, maybe it was a miscommunication on the card. Um, I was asking for who was donating time to Mr. Collins and I, I stayed your name in, on your card. It says, um, you, you checked both. Do you wish to speak on this item? But you also checked, uh, do you wish to donate your time? And, and you stated to Ray Collins. So that caused confusion.
Got you. I completely understand that, but that's why I've had my hand up for so long because I wanted to talk when I had a chance.
Didn't, did not realize that and, and because the time is donated...
Cause I'm one of the flood buyout victims downhill from this, so...
Chair? Yes.
So I read her lips when you asked her about the donating time and she said, "I'd rather speak."
I, I totally missed that. Sometimes there's a lot going on in the room.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, with that being said, since that was my bad then, if you would like to, to make a brief comment?
Okay.
Cause obviously we've got a motion. Public hearing is closed.
And I understand this is non-traditional. I just have a few things that weren't, um, discussed. So, um, thank you all, really. Um, I'm on the Williamson Creek flood buyout. The map was up there. This property sits immediately on top of the hill that rolls straight down to Williamson Creek. It's touted as an affordable housing complex while we are just systematically, um, tearing down 30 truly affordable housing. We have woefully inadequate infrastructure. To your point that infrastructure's always part, we have six drainage cul, we have six drains in this neighborhood. There is nothing that they can do to take us from zero impervious cover to 50 impervious cover that's not gonna kill me and my community. We are at the bottom of the bowl. We are four blocks downhill from them on the Richmond Tributary that funnels right into Williamson Creek right there. It's a huge flood issue. It's being studied by watershed. This is a watershed flood buyout. So I have flooding. I'm also a cyclist. Those are my kids my husband was talking about. We get yelled at, we get screamed at, high-speed traffic. He's been hit on Emerald Forest, Vincent, same road in the last month and people are passing us on the left while we're trying to turn left on a two-way lane that is bike lanes on both sides. It is dangerous. The rerouting takes us through our neighborhood, through our only potential hope for a safe route to school and to get out of this neighborhood. That's what all these neighbors are over here for. It runs through the direct, through the construction phase. It'll run straight up our street. And we're not talking 17 cars like Chris sees. We are talking traffic counts. We have thousands of cars because nothing was considered for Vincent when we approved that milestone development on Stastny. Routes everything to Vincent. Now this routes everything to Vincent. And we have two elementary schools sitting right here and a hospital zone. The Berkestrom Spur that is a tier-one urban trails master plan. It's a tier-one trail. There are groups all over the city working on getting that Berkestrom Spur from UP right now so that we, Austin can have our first ever rail trail. There is so much going on on this property that, um, and it's a hornet's nest. And I'm wrapping up. And so just consider, nobody's doing traffic studies and nobody's doing flood studies on us. There's no way you can stop 50% impervious cover from rolling downhill.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
All right. Questions? It's bigger.
All of you.
Commissioner Kazee and Commissioner McGrath. Commissioner McGrath.
Um, well, my question is just directed to whoever could speak for the neighborhood on this. I know I've heard talk about wanting the city to buy this land, you know, and wanting to keep from having the impervious covers, my understanding, keep it from adding to a flooding situation. So my question is, cause this has been on our agenda for a while. Um, has the neighborhood had any discussions with anyone at the city um, toward doing something about getting, asking the city to buy the property? And is there anybody, is there any action the neighborhood has taken so far?
Recognizing that the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna be careful with this.
Right. I just, if there's one spokesperson...
Is anybody from, can anybody from the city speak to the conversations at the neighborhood meetings? No? Okay.
Yeah. So...
The recent council districts there, any?
Uh, in, okay. Can't have people yelling from the audience.
Well, I think that's real, that's a real difficulty. And, and in my neighborhood, we had this very same exact situation upstream from where the flooding is. Uh, the state decided to sell some land. The city decided, the city didn't want to buy it and do flood mitigation. They wanted housing. We got over 100 units.
Uh, Commissioner Kazee, then I have a comment.
You know, like I said before I made the motion, I feel for the neighborhood. I'd rather see the city buy the land. But between the two options in front of me, the case in front of me, just crunching that, this data, I stand behind my motion.
Um, I would like to add, similar to how this conversation sometimes went when Howard Lazarus was up here, um, I would strongly recommend, uh, to city staff to expedite whatever can be done for this road, um, recognizing that development is forthcoming in some form or fashion, um, and try to get ahead of the development curve as much as possible. Um, so I know that when they look at, you know, the multiple layers of, and heat maps of where dollars should be spent within CIP, um, this seems like a very high priority to resolve some safety concerns. I know we got them all over the city, but this one seems a little hotter than others. Commissioner White.
Just one comment on the, on the drainage. This is a, a problem that keeps coming up before us, the subdivisions, the drainage. And right now, the way that the city code is written, the drainage, any new development that happens on a, a parcel has to be, the drainage has to be mitigated to the level that it is currently being dealt with. Which means if it is currently unsatisfactory, then it stays currently unsatisfactory. It just doesn't get any worse. And so part of the conversations that we've been having is what does that look like if we could ask for more? And I would encourage all of you, especially those being most impacted by this flooding, to be part, become part of that conversation on where could the city ask for more from development to bring us to a space where we're not just maintaining the Band-Aids that we have, but we're getting something more for it. Um, but currently, we don't really have that option right now.
Commissioner Shay, Commissioner McGrath, and then we've got a motion on the table.
Apologies, I came in a little bit late during the hearing, but I wanted to comment to the neighborhood as we talked about funding for this street. And, uh, you know, as we all know, quite recently, what was just passed was the, the bond election for mobility bond. So there was, there were already a lot of money set out for certain corridors, but there was also money set for things like safe routes to school. So think about those things. Look at those parts and see if you could start talking to your council members about where that funding can go to and possibly to help, you know, streets like Vincent, which, you know, sounds like it's pretty dangerous. But you could ask for some, you know, some funding to start heading toward that. So try that route. So there is money there.
All right. Commissioner McGrath, then.
Um, last comment, but I think on impervious cover, are we right now at the 55%?
Fifty, 50% is what the motion is.
50%? Not the 55?
Right. That we, we're reducing it from 55 to 50, recognizing that they're currently at 47. Okay. All right. With that, we've got a motion on the table. Um, and this motion is in supporting of SF6 with a cap of 16 units, 50% impervious cover, no more than two units may be attached together, uh, one, uh, egress, ingress off of Vincent, uh, no ADUs and solid fencing at six feet. Um, everybody understand the motion? All right. With that, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Abstaining? That one's loud tonight. It's angry.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I did write one of the thing down, which was to limit building height to two stories. Was that still part of the list?
That, that didn't, that failed as a friendly amendment.
That failed, okay.
All right. So, um, that motion passes 11-0. Okay.